Our December 13th, 2018 council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by James Angus. James is 12 and a second-class scout for Troop 95. He also attends Foster Middle School. Please stand.
To God our most gracious, heavenly Father, we humbly come before thee this evening to thank thee of the many blessings which thou has bestowed upon us. We thank thee that we could all attend this city council meeting and we ask thee to bless it, that we, that the leaders will be able to make good choices for our community and help make it better. We thank thee, Father, for the wonderful day that we have had today and we thank thee that we could all be here tonight. We ask thee, Father, to bless our country, that the leaders of it may know how to better it and how to, and what to do next. And we say these things in the name of thy beloved Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
James, if you ever get tired of being a scout buddy, you could be sitting right up here anytime you want to. You were awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate your willingness to come out here and do that for us tonight. Tonight, an employee recognition. I am recognizing City View Municipal Television. Recently, the media department received an award for second in the state of overall excellence in programming for City View Municipal Television from the Texas Association of Telecommunication Officers and Advisors, also known as T A T O A, pronounced T U T O A. Thank you, Sean. Longview also received two honorable mention awards for videos for the mayor's virtual town hall meeting and the homeless resource day. In recent years, the department has received other awards from T U T O A and from the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers. Part of the responsibility of the media development department is maintaining two television channels, City View Municipal Television and Public Safety Television. Recently, City View went through a major redesign to enhance the overall viewer experience and improve the channel's delivery of news, events, and information. Rather than static screens, information is now shared using motion graphics. City View also hosts a variety of programming such as city council meetings and videos that highlight various aspects of the city. Like the State of the City, the unity honors award luncheon and walk-bike campaign and always popular holiday greetings. Join us tonight as two employees from media department most directly responsible for City View Municipal Television, join us Terry Miller and Scott Schellhorst. Please come forward. Okay, I get to be around these guys all the time because they're always doing videos or clips or things that I have to do as the mayor and as council. And so I know how hard they work and I know how wonderful they are and how easy they make it for me and the council members to be able to bring you all things that you need. But you all don't realize what great guys we have here in the whole media department. They're always there. They work long, hard hours. They work whenever we ask them to work. They do anything that we ask them to do, even when I ask them to do crazy things like video, a bunch of first graders answering questions up here from the mayor's chair for our State of the City address. They never balk. They never complain. These guys are professionals and I really, really appreciate you all. Y'all are, y'all make my job so much easier in all the communication that's necessary to run the things that we run. So I really, really appreciate you guys. You know, you're the best. I appreciate you and all the things that you do. But you know, most, most of all, I appreciate your attitude that you do it because you're always happy, always kind. You're never, you never get anxious with me and I know I put a lot of pressure on you all and I appreciate that very much. All of the best. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you so much. Hold on, guys. I have some awards. This is for Mayor Mac's virtual town hall meeting, which is very special to me because I think that's a very neat thing that we do. It's kind of a new thing that we did last year and we'll continue to do it because I think citizens enjoyed that. It's easy to do this. They set it up. They make it where I can communicate with the citizens in a virtual town hall meeting, you know, live and it really works. And so I appreciate that. I know it's a lot of work for you guys, but I appreciate it so much. And the homeless resource day, you just had to be there to know what we're talking about. That's one of the greatest days we've had in Longview in a long time. Looking forward to the next one because you guys just rock that thing all the way. Thank you so much. And then, of course, the programming award, this is overall excellence of programming under $200,000, $200,000, second place. I don't know who won first, but they must be darn good. Thank y'all. Metroplex, hey, that's okay. Thank you, guys, so much. Appreciate y'all. Okay, for virtual community recognition, and this is kind of something I decided to do even though it's a little bit unusual. How many of y'all like the way the council chambers look with these decorations up here? It's really nice and it's very festive. You know, that didn't just happen. That took some effort and some time. And our very own Candace did that for us. And Candace, so you're my community recognition tonight because you did something that enhances the entire community. Come on up. If you want to, Candace. We don't have to stand on the tape. See, this is- Okay, wait a minute. Okay, Scott and Terry, they have tape for all three of us where we're supposed to stand so it makes the best view. They didn't put no tape up here for me and Candace, now, did they? They made sure they looked really good up here. I guarantee you they're gonna look really good on focus. We're gonna be just fine. Candace is a really special lady in our, in our lives and she does so much for council members and for Mr. Bonds as his secretary. And she does things that no one asked her to do and, and you know, I know what decorating is like and I'm not a big fan of having to do it, but I love what it looks like. And so Candace, one of those ladies that never, ever gets upset with me when I ask her for some of the craziest things in the world. It's always, yes, sir, I'll do it. No problem. It's taken care of. So Candace, thank you for being that person because the community really appreciates you and I really appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're to citizen comment and I have no speaker cards. Would anyone like to speak and then fill out a card later? Very well, thank you. Okay, presentation items. Outdoor events ordinance update. Mr. Karen.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Bonds. Now, over the past few years, we've seen a tremendous increase in the number of special events that have come to our community, which is great and wonderful and we want to encourage people to continue to do that. But one of the things that we've, we've noticed is we need to have a better streamlined process for being able to assist in the success of those, those events. And so many of the events impact multiple different departments, whether it's police, fire, development services, parks, environmental, environmental services, public works and those kind of things. And to be honest with you, sometimes we don't do the best job of coordinating with ourselves. And so we've recognized that and we want to make sure that event organizers are set up for success. And so that's what our intent is in going through this process, so that they have one single point of contact for, for them to be able to come to, to be able to be successful and have an enjoyable event for our community. So you can see all the different goals that we kind of put together to move this thing forward. And I think one of the, the most important ones is that last one listed is, we want to provide guidance to event organizers, to assist them in being able to plan a better event. A lot of times, they've done it for years and years and years and so they're already good at it. But we have a number of organizers that come to us that have never put on an event and they're like, what do I do about this? What do I do about that? Well, we have some of those experiences and we need to be able to share them, them with them. So the purpose of this is, is some of these gatherings, due to their size and their special requirements, may take, may place unique demands on the public resources. Again, I mentioned some of the departments that are, that those occur to. And so it's necessary for the city to get advanced notice on that. And what we intend to do with this is be able to, to address all of those concerns and be able to assist in planning these events. So we, one of the first things we did is, because we get this call, this question all the time, what do I need to do to put on a special event? And we don't have anything or we haven't had anything. And so we've actually developed a flow chart and essentially is, all right, we ask two simple questions relatively. Is, is it gonna take place outside? And if the question is yes, and those are some of the examples, then we're saying, all right, well, you might need one, but you might not. So is it, does it go beyond your existing property or the property of the event? Are you gonna do, is it an exorbitant amount of crowds? Does it involve a street closure? All those kind of things. If it involves those, then most likely you're gonna need a special event and some coordination from the city's part. Of course, we always tell people, if you're serving food to the public, you're always gonna have to have a health food permit, whether that's inside your, your place of business or one of these other types of things. So that's kind of the, the general way that we started all of it. And so to understand, I know it seems pretty simple, but right now, this is the process that somebody has to go through to get an event. And Mrs. Ishihara had an event earlier this year and I know she was probably pulling her hair out, having to go to various different departments to get all of this done. And I think she touched each one of these. And so that last one there is, I know the mayor is big on talking about the different community events, so we want to make sure that it's all integrated into our community calendar as well. So anyway, that's, that's the kind of coordination process that we're looking at. So when we get into what we want to do, the way that we want to handle it, is the first thing I always say, in order to have a successful event, you have to have a venue. If you haven't secured that venue, that's hard to have an event. And I know that seems odd, but where do you take, where does a 5K take place? Well, the city street. Well, you can't reserve a city street, can you? No, but we have a parade permit. And so you know, some of those types of things need to occur. But where are you gonna start? Is it gonna be on a city parking lot? Is it gonna be in a, in a park? Those are the kind of things that, that people weren't, you know, police department said, oh, yeah, you're good to do your 5K. Well, it may run through a park. Well, if we have an event or something else going on that may be in conflict with that event, that's not good for anybody. So again, part of it is, we want to make sure that a site is secured, whether it's on public property or, or private, and make sure, that's number one thing. You got, you got a site? Yep. All right. Well, let's move forward. Let's submit the application, pay an application fee, and I'll get to that in, in just a second. All of our various departments will review it and the intent of having everybody review it is for us to, to say, hey, have you thought about doing it this way? Or have you thought about how you're gonna collect trash? Have you thought about where your cars are gonna park? Have you thought about these types of things? So they can address it as part of that application process rather than us saying, yep, you can do your event and then you get to the day of and now all of a sudden, you have people that are, they're trying to get through streets that are closed or those kind of things. So again, part of it is just, we want to make sure that we get through the process to assist that organizer to have the best experience possible. And then the last part is, we're gonna issue that permit and one of the things that we're talking about is assessing direct service fees. Okay? So whatever direct service is impacted by the city and there's an additional cost above and beyond what our normal city operations are, then the, the person responsible for that event is the beneficiary and should pay for those services, not the city as a whole. And again, we're, we try to be mindful of city tax dollars and everybody's dollars. So that's kind of one of those things that we want to make sure that we protect. So again, that last part is, then it would be all, all processed through our special events calendar. So when we talk about special events, currently, if you want to do a, an outdoor, it's in our outdoor event ordinance, that's what it's called right now, it's $250. And we have inconsistent fees throughout various parts of things, you know, whether police are directing traffic, whether you're having a private person do that, those kind of things. And so what we've done is, we've just changed it, we're proposing to change it to, the special event fee would be $50. So it's a significant reduction in that what the application fee is, more of a cursory fee for us to, to review everything as it takes place. So the way, so to give you an example of how, what we've done in the past and moving forward, what it would look like, is the current fee for a parade is $50. Now, the police doesn't charge to monitor any, any intersections or do those kind of things. However, they may be out on site for two to three hours and it may involve two to three officers. Well, that's overtime for the police. And sometimes in your larger events like a triathlon, you know, that's, that's costing the city and its taxpayers $1,000. Certainly, there's a certain public benefit to protecting the public and those intersections, but really, the user of that event or the organizer is really benefiting from not having to incur those costs. And to be honest with you, what we've seen is a number of 5Ks and events come to our community because our fees are so much lower than what other communities are. And so a number of events are taking place in our community that are benefiting organizations that are not in our community. And not that we don't want to have those events here, but we want to protect our resources. That's, that's one of the, the intents. So what we would do is take a look, you charge the $50 for the processing fee essentially for the special event, and then we would take a look at what staff time would be above and beyond what we'd normally do for an event. Again, if we have police that are normally scheduled, that may be able to do something, that's fine. But if we have to call in officers and, and we're having to pay them overtime, then there should be a fee, fee applied to that organizer for that event. So all of this takes place in chapter 79, which is under public amusements. And that's not normally an article of our ordinances that you would see the director of Parks and Recreation, but this is one of those things that I've been pushing for us to, to get for a long time. And so I guess I was the chosen one to come up here and stand before you to, to propose what's going on. And what we're doing is adding some definitions, we're coordinating things. Development, development services will be where everything originates and where the coordination will take place because they're already doing a lot of those types of things when it comes to business permits and construction permits and those kind of things. So there's a process already in plate, a place that they already have and they coordinate a lot of those reviews. And we want to also incorporate the parades into that same article. So that's, that's kind of what, we want to make sure that it's streamlined and it's more user-friendly. And so we have, have prepared the ordinance. We plan to come back in January and actually present that to you. We can actually get the draft of it to you beforehand if you would like to review. But we wanted to be able to talk about the process and the issues and, and know that they're there. Before we moved forward and said, here's the ordinance, what do you guys think? We wanted to be able to get some feedback before we did that. So that's where we are and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Karen?
I do have a couple of questions. I do want to say that I really like the idea. I think it's important for everybody to be on the same page and to have one place to go and I think that's very valuable. I think we are gonna get a lot of feedback from those that have events, because I would say that they're primarily or almost exclusively nonprofits who have been used to not paying fees for doing these types of events. So we'll be surprised and likely unhappy about incurring fees. The 50, so the $50 application would be, I'm a private or I'm a nonprofit, it's just a flat $50, this is what I'm paying. No exceptions.
Yes, ma'am. And again, a lot of times that is waived for nonprofits. And again, as we move forward, we would anticipate that fee potentially being waived if council chooses.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. So like right now, the $250, I don't think I've ever paid that. That's usually waived for nonprofits. So I was curious, is, is the 50 just gonna be for everybody? We're not waiving it anymore or that's something we're gonna discuss?
Our, the way that we have put it together right now for nonprofits, we would continue to waive that $50.
Okay. And then my other question is, have you done any projections on like maybe specific events that we have, you know, every year that we know are gonna come up and then what those direct costs would be, what you would project them to be?
Well, I know the police department did a review of, of what their overtime costs were this past year in events and it was approximately $10,000 that, that they incurred that if it wasn't for those events, they would not have. So that's, you know, that's a, you know, it's not an insignificant amount, but it is, we believe that it's something that organizers at least should share in the cost of that.
Sure. I am making no comment on that. It's tight. But so on the slide, you had $400 approximately for police time for a 5K. So like if I organized a 5K, I might expect, if this happens, to pay an additional $400 to the city in event fees for that where I'd previously not paid anything, right?
Potentially. And again, part of the process is to, for us to be able to take a look at your route and say, you know, the way that you've laid it out, it would take two to three officers in three and four hours or whatever it may be. And for us to review that and say, you know what, if you shifted it or did these kind of things, you may not need any officers at all. Or you may need to have just one. And/or for you to develop a plan to use volunteers and/or private security, whatever it may be. Again, our intent is not necessarily to, to gain any revenue, but it is to work with an organizer to say, have you thought about possibly doing it this way to save everybody made it a little bit of money and to coordinate it a little bit better?
Is there any plan for providing notice or input for those that are currently organizing events that would be impacted?
We haven't talked about that, but certainly one of the things that we, we could do is, and I think that may be part of the challenge, is being able to determine who those organizers were because they were in various departments or areas. But we could, we could certainly try to work on that. Absolutely.
I would say it for somebody to be surprised.
Yeah. No, absolutely. Absolutely. And that's not our intent, is, is not for somebody to hold an event that has been successful and done things in the past. But I think part of our responsibility is to take, take care of public services as well, so.
Any other questions, Mr. Karen?
How much, how much would it cost for the inbox parade to be put on?
If it's a city-sponsored event-
Is it what?
If it's a city-sponsored event, which the city is, is a, is a cosponsor of that event, then the fees are waived. So if the city is the one that is putting on the event.
Who handles the overtime for the police officers?
The, the police department does. I mean, they, they know and understand some of those city, city responsibilities.
Well, we need to all remember that obviously more events equals more people, which equals more money spent, which equals more revenues for both businesses and the city, and that's always a good thing. But we also have to be mindful of certain city budgets that get impacted more than others. It's not, it's obviously not fair for the police department to have, to spend that kind of overtime budget out of their budget and other departments don't. And it's not, it's, it's a benefit for just a small group of, of individuals and we have to, well, it'll, it'll be a, it'll be a nice discussion we shall have and we shall continue to discuss this, Mr. Karen. And thanks for bringing it forward and giving us time to digest this and come up with some ideas and options that we might throw back at you, okay?
Yeah, and what, we're certainly, we can provide the ordinance, the proposed ordinance over the next two weeks. That way you have more time to be able to review it rather than just with your packet the Friday.
Right. That'd be very good. And I'm sure we'll have some input for you over the next couple of weeks for those of us who are involved in things like this or have groups that will contact us as representatives, you all as representatives, to give us a heads up of things that might concern them as well. But I mean, bottom line is, sometimes it costs money to do business and that's just the way it is. So we have to, we had to be, you know, mindful of that. So thank you very much, sir. On the public safety update, Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mac, council members, Mr. Bonds, good evening. We're getting ready to start off our new year and we're gonna start the new year off with our, our fourth teen academy. Right after the first of the year, this teen academy is gonna start January 21st. So if we have any area teens that are interested in learning and wanting to learn more about law enforcement, this is a great opportunity to come and interact with some of our officers and let us kind of show a little bit about law enforcement and some of the things that we do right here in the Longview community. Anybody that's interested in participating in this can go to longviewtexas.gov backslash teen CPA or they can contact Officer Roger Askew, who's a school resource officer at Spring Hill at 903-235-2170. And we've had a great response from our local teens since we've started this teen academy. So I encourage anybody that's interested or anybody that knows a teen that might be interested to, to fill out an application and come down and, and go through this academy. This past month, we had a retirement within the police department. I want to congratulate Lisa Hemus on 22 years of service. Lisa served her first 15 years with the police department, or second 15 years with the police department. Prior to that, she served seven years with the fire department and Lisa handled all of our payroll, travel receipts, budget items, things of that nature, bills that needed to be paid. And I want to congratulate her on her retirement. She's gonna retire and spend more time with family, so I want to thank Lisa for the time and service that she put into the police department and the fire department as well. If you remember last year, I talked to you about a, a new outreach program that we were gonna start, our business police academy. We have, we have completed that. Last month, we had a graduation ceremony and we graduated 31 graduates that represented at 18 different businesses here in the city. We got a lot of great feedback from the individuals that come through this program that was geared towards our business community. We're in the process of planning for our next one that'll begin in February of 2019. So I want to thank everybody that participated in that academy and gave us the feedback that, good feedback that we can use to help make the next academy better. And it was a great time for us too to also learn our, our business community as well. So I want to thank everybody that participated in that academy and we're planning to have a bigger and better one coming up after the first of the year. Oh, our annual bowling tournament for the Doors Youth Transitional Center. Last month, we had the opportunity to square off against the fire department and the fundraiser for the Doors unit and we ended up coming away with another trophy. Not only another trophy, but had some other awards as well. One of our teams had the second highest score between all the participants that were there and won the spirit award and want to thank Chief Steelman and the firemen that came out that night to, to square off against us and kind of running out of room with all these trophies. But more importantly, thank you to the Doors organization for inviting us out there to participate and help them raise money for a great cause in our community. So it was a good, good fun night. On November 30th, we graduated. We had five new cadets graduate from the police academy over in Kilgore. They were Richard Davis, Caleb Watson, Chester Austin, Ira Hayes, and Michael Bynum, who was our, the class valedictorian over at the police academy. All of these cadets here received high academic praises from the academy staff at the graduation ceremony. And then just yesterday, we commissioned the five officers and provided them with their, with their badge and their shield and next week, they will enter into the field training program for the next phase of their, their training to become fully functional police officers. So with the hiring of these five, with the commissioning of these five officers, that currently leads us with just four vacancies in the police department and we have three that are ready to start the academy in January, so, or February of next year. So we're staying up with our, with our staffing. So want to welcome the officers, congratulate them on a, on a great job and how they represented our department in the academy and wish them luck as they enter the next phase of their, their training. And then just, just want to say on behalf of the men and women of Longview Police Department, we'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe and happy new year and we're ready to close this year out and start a new one here real soon.
Any questions, Chief Bishop?
Chief, I just want to say thank you. It's been a great year from the police department. We've had, and hopefully end this year, you know, with really good statistics as we have going on right now and wish for the best for the end of the year. But thank you all and I appreciate y'all very much. Thank you, sir.
Chief Steelman.
Good evening, Mayor Mac, members of council, Mr. Bonds. What he didn't tell you is that the bowling score was a whole lot closer than that last softball game score. So we, we did make a showing, but second place in this case was still last. So, but the bottom line is Doors benefited and we were happy to be a part of it. We did have a great time out there bowling against the guys that night. So we always look forward to that one. So we had a crew back in November that got to participate in a really unique thing. They, they were part of the Greg County Adoption Day. And what made this so special is this crew actually delivered this baby two years prior in not-so-good of circumstances in a motel on East Marshall Avenue. The, the young lady was born at 27 weeks, which made her a preemie, which made it a really dicey- dicey process of getting her to the hospital, getting her situated in the NICU so that she could begin stabilizing. And to see this little girl two years later, and now in the adoption of this new family here in town, it was just kind of a heartwarming deal for everybody. So our crew there, Lieutenant Rami Blalock, firefighter medic Josh Flanagan, firefighter medic Heath Horton, and not pictured were firefighter medic Colin Whitley, who actually did an over-the-top job on this delivery, got this baby to the hospital, so that now she's got a long, prosperous life in front of her. So just the unique thing that they got to be a part of this, they plan on staying in touch with this family and watching this little girl as she grows up here in Longview. So, pretty cool deal. We actually got to participate with helping California out on a national level, so this speaks volumes of the personnel that we have here in Longview. We deployed three personnel who actually picked up a fourth member from the Wichita Falls Fire Department to head out to California where they spent about nine days, helping them get their last round of wildfires under control. They did take our Tifmas fire engine, which is a state-supported engine. We're certainly fortunate to be a willing participant in that process. The state of Texas really stepped up, sent about 50 pieces of fire equipment and about 200 personnel out to help California get out of their bind. So these guys brought back some great experiences, and it will certainly benefit us here locally should we ever experience anything of that magnitude in Longview. Oh, I wanted to mention them. So this is fire driver engineer Dusty Burks, fire driver engineer Carly Silk, and firefighter medic Chris McGinnis. So they represented us very well and did an outstanding job. And there they are with a part of the contingency from Texas. We had the opportunity earlier this week, I believe on Tuesday, to have a meal prepared for us at our fire station number six up on McCann Road. The culinary arts class at Longview High School reached out and said they wanted to show their appreciation to the crews that take care of them there at Longview High School. So for us, that's our Station Six and our Station Eight crews. So the culinary class brought all of their prep, all their prep food and everything to Station Six, and just told the crew to sit back, they've got this, and they cooked a fabulous meal that consisted of a fireman salad, outdoorsman chili, and bananas foster. So let me tell you a little bit real quick, because it's gonna make you hungry. The fireman salad had smoked paprika and vinaigrette dressing, the outdoorsman chili was venison pork and beef topped with cheese and served in a bread bowl. I may have a picture, oh, I didn't put that picture in there. And then they had bananas foster at the end. So just a great time had by all, the guys really enjoyed the interaction with the students. I want to thank Mr. Casper, who's the principal of that program, Chef Kevin Hill, and I do want to give each one of these young ladies a little bit of shout-out. So Madison, Alexis, Alexa, Kayla, and Kennedy, thank them so much for coming and taking care of our crews that day. It was a great time. Just last night, we had the opportunity out at Autobody Express out on North 259 to put some of our crews through some very complex vehicle extrication training. They had a national speaker that they brought in at their expense, they kind of gave us free run of their body shop, they had about six different vehicles in there that we got to experiment and try out some new extrication techniques using new tools and certain devices that really opened up some eyes, just some great hands-on opportunity, and it's great to have partners in Longview and in our community that are willing to step up and bear this expense of bringing in things like this and offering that at no cost to our members to go out and get some great hands-on training from nationally-recognized speakers. So certainly want to thank the group out there at Autobody Express for supporting the Longview Fire Department in this way. The Longview Fire Department Toy Drive, this was actually postponed from the previous Saturday, it will be held this Saturday, September the 15th, from 9:00 to 5:00 in the parking lot of the Longview Mall. New and unwrapped gifts is what we're taking, and we partner up with the Texas Department of Family Protective Services, so we hope the community will turn out and support this great annual event to get toys to kids that might not have anything this Christmas. So just want to thank you in advance for your support of this annual toy drive. The last time you're gonna have to hear me talk about this for a whole year is the Longview Fire Department EMS subscription program. That timeframe is still open, it will close on New Year's at midnight. So this is to get yourself registered, $70 per household, it will register you for the 2019 calendar year. So if you're not taking advantage of this program, strongly encourage you to reach out to our EMS department and get yourselves and your family members signed up. And as always, code red is a free city service to receive early and timely weather and emergency notifications over your phone that you have registered. So again, another free service that the city offers, and we hope that our citizens will participate. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Steelman?
Chief, I just want to thank you for how you all are making it a point to interact with the community and be involved, and you know, when someone wants to cook you a meal, that means you've done a pretty good job. So thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very good.
Renata Consent Agenda, anyone like something pulled off for separate discussion?
Can we pull off H?
Mr. Mayor? We can pull off H. Anything else off for separate discussion?
We'll do per the rest.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Wright, number H?
Yes, on H, we are hiring some consultants to do some planning for us, and I was just wondering, Mr. Shirley, if you could explain to us where that money is going from, or coming from? We seem to use consultants pretty regularly, and so I was just wondering, you would explain that for us?
Yes, sir, and this is a project that we do every five years, it's a cyclical project that's in our work plan. These are federally, federal planning dollars that are transferred down. The NPO is a federally-funded group that is housed within the city of Longview. The city of Longview is the physical agent for them, so we kind of oversee the staff, the staff are city employees, but the city of Longview will actually be the one that contracts with the consultant and provides the work.
So it's not coming out of the city budget, then?
No, sir. It's all federally-funded transportation dollars that are passed through.
Okay.
The NPO gets their money from Texas, basically.
Correct.
All right.
Okay. Are you satisfied, sir?
I'm satisfied.
Would you like to make a motion?
Move to approve number H on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Motion carries. Before you get up, Ms. Choi, just one second, you're good, you're good. I just want to take just a minute to thank the 100 Acres of Heritage for donating that Christmas tree to the city of Longview. That's a huge thing, and it's a great value to them and to us, and I don't know how many of y'all were out there for the lighting, but I was, and it was really special. I mean, it was a great thing for the community to have a tree like that, and I hope to see us add to that in years to come. You know, there are certain cities that do lots of things during Christmas time, and I would like to see that as a stimulus for us to continue to move that forward. It's a beautiful, beautiful tree, and people really enjoy that time. So 100 Acres Heritage, thank you all for that donation. You guys step up all the time, and I appreciate that very much. Okay, Ms. Choi, we're at a public hearing on PD 18-09.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Bonds. The applicant is requesting a rezone of approximately 6.8 acres from agricultural to planned development for single-family detached homes. The purpose of this planned development is to allow for smaller lot sizes and smaller setbacks. This item was postponed from the last city council meeting in order to hold a neighborhood meeting on December the 4th. The applicant was present to present their project to the concerned citizens, and staff was present as well. There were some concerns about whether this project received incentives or grants from the city, and staff assured them that they did not. This planned development is like many of our planned developments that we, that staff sees, encounters throughout the years. The trend, the development trend is to see smaller lot sizes with smaller setbacks, but to have the same minimum house size as a traditional SF4 or SF5 neighborhood. The applicant is proposing to construct a residential subdivision with 19 lots for single-family detached homes. These lots will have a minimum 5,000-square-foot lot size, maximum height of two and a half stories, minimum house size of 1,200 square feet, with a set, front setback of 25 feet in the front, 10 on the rear, five on the sides. The proposed street will be a public street with sidewalks along both sides of the street. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Are there any speakers?
I'd like to ask Mr. Alston a few questions if I could.
Mr. Alston, please approach. You're welcome, sir. Again.
Good evening, council.
First, Mr. Alston, thank you for coming out last Tuesday and answering a lot of the citizens in Spring Hill's questions, and thank you to the staff for coming out also. Appreciate your time in doing that. I just want to go over a few of the questions that we had. Is there any kind of governmental assistance that you're going to be using to build the houses, or anybody's going to be using to finance the houses?
No, sir.
No Section 8, no HUD housing, or anything of that nature?
No, sir.
Okay. What are you expecting the price range to be on these houses?
I expect them to be in the 165 to 210, maybe.
Okay. And these will be brick and masonry exteriors?
Yes, sir.
Correct. What's the planned square footage on these houses?
Well, the minimum, according to the planned development, is 1,200. They'll most likely be closer to 1,600 square feet on average, I would bet.
Okay. And also, then you're going to have a privacy fencing between the development and the school property?
Correct.
Okay. All right, really, that's all the questions that I had.
Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Alston? I know you've been very kind to give us leeway to have time to vet this out, and I appreciate that. You all have not complained, which you could have, and you allowed us to have time to have a meeting with David's district. And so I just want to thank you all for that, because not everybody is as agreeable as you all have been. So from my standpoint, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions or comments? This public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
I'm moving. I want to just say this, my bottom line is this on this development. This group wants to put in a very nice development that young families coming to the Spring Hill area can afford. It's gonna bring us in new tax dollars, and if you want to put a dollar amount on the kids, any of the new, any new kids that come into the district will bring about $5,400 to the school. So, I mean, it's a good win on the economics for the school in Spring Hill. So I would like to move that we approve this with one addition, 75% of the exterior of the house will be brick or other masonry, and other than that, I move to approve this item.
Before, there's a second. Mr. Alston, are you all, are you all okay with that, with that motion?
Yes, sir.
You have no objections to that? I just needed to know that. Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you all very much for that. Action item, Consider Resolution Expressing Intent to Reimburse the City from Proceeds of Bonds to Cost of Construction of Certain Projects Approved for Funding of the November 2018 Bond Election. Ms. Cohen?
Good evening. This resolution accepts the recommendation of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee as approved at the special call meeting on November 29th. Do we have that timeline? On the screen, you'll see the bond schedule that was approved, the timeline with the projects are listed, and at the bottom, you see the first bond issuance will be $50,530,000. With the approval of this resolution, the city will begin spending from the general fund cash reserves on the approved projects from the bonds. The intention is that the cash reserves will be reimbursed from the proceeds of the issued bonds once they're received. I can answer any questions.
Any question, Ms. Cohen? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Consider Resolution Authorizing and Directing the City Manager or the City Manager Designated to Execute Any Necessary Documents for the Purchase of Water Feature for Jackman Splash Pad. Mr. Karen?
Good evening, and get to see the first project of our bonds that were approved last November. And if you recall, out at Lear Park at Jackman Splash Pad, there are three different sections. The middle section is complete, the ones on the ends were incomplete. All the infrastructure is in place, however, it just currently has ground sprays. And so one of the projects we included was to complete Lear Park as the plan was intended, and so with the bond proceeds, we are gonna move forward with that. So this is the western section, just because of the stagecoach. And I always like to point out, there's a kid over there on the right that has long sleeves and a hood on, but I'm not sure why that took place. And then the other section is the pirate section. And so we're excited to be able to move forward with this project so that it can be open April 1, when we open up the splash pad for the 2019 season. So we recommend it and approve it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question, Mr. Karen?
Just to come in. Good evening, Scott Howard. Can you please just explain to me, so that I can better explain it to some of my constituents in District 2, why we're starting with this project first?
Sure. No, that's a great question. We've had the plan for this since when the splash pad put in, 2012? And so we had the plan, and all we needed is the funding to be able to put the items in place. And so it was an easy one to be able to, because there was no planning involved. It's just purchase of actual equipment.
Okay.
And I might add, you know, the splash pad is such an addition to Lear Park, and it brings so much joy to kids in the summertime that have no place else to go and do that. And so I think it's phenomenal that we even have one, and to be able to expand it in this fashion is nothing but a benefit to our community and to the citizens that live here and those that want to come and visit us. So I think this is a great place to start. It requires nothing, as you say, Scott. The planning is already there, it doesn't require any right-of-way acquisitions, doesn't require any engineering, it's done. So it's a great place to start, so I appreciate you all bringing that forward. And once again, the bond's been approved, let's get to work. I mean, there's no reason to sit around. We've given a direction, let's forge forward. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, I interrupted. I will point out, though, that with this, the amount that we included for the bonds on this part of the project is exactly what the cost of this will be. So again, we're not spending any additional funds. Exactly.
No difference.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. As a community interest, Mr. Moore?
I'd like to give a quick report on the Food for Fines program that we participated in this Thanksgiving sponsored by our public library. This was the second year we put this on. Last year, we had a total of 200 items donated. This year, we had 2,500 items donated. Many people gave additional items over and above their outstanding fines. I want to publicly thank Jennifer and her staff at the library for conducting this program. I want to thank the public for having so many overdue books and for participating in this very worthwhile program. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Snoddy?
Just want to say thank you to everyone for your thoughts, your prayers, your flowers, the cards, for those who have attended the home-going celebration of my mom. So thank you so much for everything. And on another note, congratulations to Bodacious Barbecue on Marbly, wildcard in a contest, and they came home with the coveted surprise of winning first place. So a shout-out, great shout-out to them, and also to my beautiful baby girl, who is 28 years old today. So happy birthday, Ricky. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wade?
Have nothing to report, other than wishing our Longview Lobo football team luck tomorrow as they travel to Dallas to semifinals football game.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Is this your hour?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Wright?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Pirtle?
Just want to wish everybody a happy holiday.
Mr. Bonds? Okay. City office will be closed on December 24th and 25th for Christmas, and January 1st for New Year's holidays. Trash recycling will pick up, pickups will shift one day later after each holiday, Monday stays as a normal collection day. The Longview Fire Department's Christmas Toy Drive takes place in Longview Mall from 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturday, December 15th, as Chief Steelman already told us. Volunteers will be collecting new and unwrapped toys to benefit local charities, including the East Texas Angel Network and Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. R&amp;K Distributors and Longview Transit will provide a free ride home on December 31st from 8:00 PM to 3:00 AM. The objective, the program is simple, ride a safe and easy alternative to getting behind a wheel on New Year's Eve. Call 903-753-2287. And I'm gonna stop right there and just say, I just tell you, I think that is such a wonderful thing for R&amp;K and Longview Transit to do. You're giving options to people to keep them safe, and I tell you, that's special. Mr. Wade?
Add to that, Mayor, Iowa's on the Longview Transit bus for the parade.
Yes, sir.
And they mentioned that they had over 100 people to use that service last year, which is really good. Yes.
Well, it is nice, and I know we have other services available, but those services do[1751.78] services do cost money, and sometimes people don't have that. And so this is an option. And I think R and K, they're, they're, they answer the call a lot, and I appreciate that. Upcoming events. There are several upcoming events throughout the city of Longview and our community. Comedian Bill Ingval, hilarious comedy, is coming to the Belcher Center at 7:30 on Friday, December 14. Tickets are available at thebelchercenter.com. If you have not seen him, you should. He is a very, very, very entertaining guy. And it's, it's really good, clean fun. It's unbelievable. I saw him on a cruise ship, and he was amazing. So I think you'll, you'll enjoy that. From Mistletoe to Merriment, "Very Merry Night" will bring laughter, smiles, and perhaps even a few sentimental tears as Longview Symphony Orchestra kicks off holiday season. On December, on Saturday, December 15th, melodies from "White Christmas" and "Christmas Story" will warm the heart and soul. Visit belchercenter.com for more information. Grab your friends and family and head down to Long, downtown Longview for an evening of holiday cheer, pop-up vendors, shopping, and music at Dash Through Downtown on Friday, December 14th from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. That ought to be a lot of fun. For more information on these events, please check out the calendar at visitlongviewtexas.com. Or for city events, visit longviewtexas.gov/calender. And Ray, as you mentioned, I don't know if you didn't, if you went to the parade, you saw an amazing parade. Again, what a great display Longview put on. And the weather was perfect. It was a great time. The crowds were huge. I was so impressed with how far down the parade route the crowd continues to be. It just grows and grows every year. So great job by those who put it on. City staff know works really hard on that. The Ambucks works hard on that. And you know, it's, it's nice to see groups coming together to do something for our community that makes it better for all of us. And I enjoy it. I, I truly have a blast at that. I bet I took 500 pictures the other night dressed as Elf. And I'm going to be honest, I've never seen that movie Elf, never once. And but obviously, people have seen it because they love that outfit. You know, that was a survey question I'd asked, you know, months ago. What, what would you like to see me dressed as in the Christmas parade? Because I was at the Grinch last year, and Elf won. And it, and people won. It was great. I, I had a blast. So thank you all for enduring that. My wife was supposed to go, and she was ill and couldn't do it. But I was hoping she would be there with me, but she'll be there for next year. So. Okay, survey question. Which of the following comprehensive plan projects would you like to see us start on first? Since we had the meeting a few weeks ago, and a lot of people came to the meeting, but I want those who were not able to come to the meeting have a chance to weigh in and see what their thoughts were. And it's, it's really neat to see what people are thinking. 30% said new police station, 19% new police fire training, 28% high-mobility streets, 10% Lear Park, 30% Cargillong. So great participation on that survey. And it's nice to see that those kind of reflect the, the things that we had talked about the other day. So we're, we're kind of on the right track, which is good. Okay, my next question has to do with tonight's deal. Have you ever visited the Jackman Splashpad? 48% said yes, 52% said no. Well, I hope those 52% will visit it now that it's going to be bigger and better and even more fun to go to. So if you don't go, it's your own fault, because it's certainly there, and it's available for all of our citizens. And I hope you'll take time to do that. Nona, today is my son's birthday as well.
Wow.
Yes. So I want to wish my son Luke a happy birthday. I came to this council meeting tonight instead of going to have dinner with him because this was my first priority. I'll see him tomorrow, hopefully. But I want to thank you all for being here tonight. I want to thank the citizens of Longview because this is our last meeting of the year. I want you all to know how much I've enjoyed this year serving as your mayor, and how much I've enjoyed serving alongside my council representatives. You all make this job very, very simple. And you, you all make us all look good. And I thank you all for your service. I look forward to next year. And I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and a happy, safe holiday season. Thank you so much. We're adjourned.